Me.
All right, well, let's do it. We'll call the Italian Village Commission meeting to order for today, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, four P M. The next business meeting is Tuesday, Tuesday, May twenty seven, twenty twenty five at noon. Ten, uh, twenty twenty five at four P M, one on one North Front Street, second floor, room two oh four. Let me swear in the staff, if you'd raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
So the mobile.
And you promise tell the truth to best of your ability, your testimony this afternoon.
Aight.
Excellent. And we'll go down and introduce the commissioners. You can start the end page.
Paige.
Gordon Smith.
Shannon Fergus.
Jason Sudi. All right, we do or do not, we have no public forum.
Not today.
Excellent. Let's do approval of staff approvals. Those start on page three. So can I have a motion to approve staff approval applications?
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I oppose, and I'll go through for extensions. Nine seventy North Sixth Street. Ninety-five East First. Uh, ten eighty-three Say. Two forty-four East Fourth. And that's all. Uh, one sixty-six Punta. One seventy Punta. Seven ninety-eight Summit. Fifty-four East Third. Ten seventy-six Say. Okay, no abstentions on any of those. Okay, no abstentions, so.
Can I get confirmation on who made the motion and second for the record?
Yes, wait the motion. She made the motion. Okay, excellent. And then, um, we have to vote on the approval of meetings from, uh, minutes from the last meeting, rather, April eighth, twenty twenty five. They have a motion for approval of the minutes of the April eighth meeting minutes. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
And one abstention, Commissioner Fergus. Okay, so with that, uh, staff, anything else we need to know before we dive into the applications? All right, sounds good. Let's do one forty East Second Avenue, C O A two five zero zero, one, two, three, one forty East Second.
That was motion stack.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, I'm looking at old agenda. Don't have to worry about it. Uh, all right, C O A twenty five hundred, three oh nine, eight three nine seven.
Would you like to swear in the act of us?
Yep, sure. All right, if you raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
I understand.
Andy Dela, promise tell the truth to best of your ability and your testimony this afternoon. Excellent. All right, staff.
Um, this is application C O A twenty five zero zero three zero nine. Eight thirty-nine Summit Streets, the search request for action for exterior building alteration. The proposed web description is to remove the existing nineteen eighty-five aluminum replacement window from the second floor cell elevation bathroom. And replace the window with a new fiberglass interior and exterior double home with one essential. And window that is not on the existing approved windows list in the existing. And to replace the existing brick moldings much existing like the like. And on the step analysis, is the applicant's length of the fiberglass interior exterior window option as the existing windows will be in a shower or back. At the May business meeting, commissioners make the following statements recommendations. Commissioner, commissioners ask staff to consult with other H B O staff members to understand how the office feels. About the fiberglass interior exterior of the mom essentially mine overall. Commission noted that the location of the window may be a significant factor. And while commissioner noted that the profile of the central line is slightly different to the elevate line, but as it that it may be appropriate as it is for secondary elevation. H B O staff note that this specific window may similar in appearance, appearance to the mom and elevating that is in the approved windows list. But we supported by staff during the location being inside the shower or back. And the commission may want to approve this as a test case for some conditions. The staff recommendation is to approve application C O A twenty five zero zero three zero nine as submitted with any and all qualifications to be submitted to H B O staff. For view on approval, prior issuance of a certificate. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen dot eleven standard twelve duration. Numbers nine, nine, twelve, nine and twelve.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Excuse me, what would you like to add to that?
Uh, I don't have much to add, but I will try to add a little bit.
Good.
That, uh, I knew this would be kind of a tricky case for you because it's fiberglass. Uh, but I was delighted to see that the very similar window has been improved before. And while this may not be akin for approval, I think, uh, staff who made a good case of why it might be a test case. We've run this house since two thousand one and have been installing one of those, so that we've requested this over integrated spaces. And would prefer to do that more. But this is a certain case where we're trying to get, uh, over reorganization to interior space that that requires a shower to be adjacent to the window. And, uh, again, getting back to the differences between the Marvin. Elevate. Which is the one that's on your approval list. And the Marvin essential. Just what I'm asking for in this case. Very similar to the exterior. As you may know by now, the interior of this elevator is wood. Of course. Thing that you guys are here to do most days is the concern with the exterior, so I'm just hoping that. What's presenting to the exterior is, uh, what we can evaluate here today. One of your colleagues pointed out that the bevel on the, uh, the. Roof window is slightly different, but I do think that because this is on secondary elevation, you never see. Kind of angles. For this, I spell. But this is a very good. Alter to. No. So seeking your approval, this window, this condition, secondary elevation or back.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, yeah, I think that what we talked about is exactly what staff captured and you just reiterated in our business meeting. And I think it'd be great to know that this, at this point, still should be a test case since, uh, we have it officially on the approved list. And as the applicant stated, that our biggest concern is exterior, and since the exterior material is the same as the approved material. Uh, the profile is very similar to secondary elevation. It does seem from my perspective to be, uh, well, a worthy. Opportunity to see how this works out, and then we can explore further as we revise the list going down the road. Um, I'm sure the applicant will be happy to tell us how things went later down, if it's a year or two from now, uh, as we usually go through and look at all those lists. And this could even be a window that becomes approved for a variety of, of different, uh, commissions at that point. So that's all I have to say with your thought.
But not.
No problem.
Adrian, what do you think?
Um, I was just curious, do you have an elevator in your house already? Because that might be a nice side by side eventually.
I do not. We had straightforward windows that held a wood or just a back.
Okay.
We've been pretty happy with those. I've noticed that, uh, a little bit of tile is creeping into. And we saw installation of the street. We saw them, it's big for that, um, eight thirty Summit Street. Handsome windows, like nice chunky styles, you know, it feels like it's a good. You know, I think this sister window. Kind of.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say, if you did have them both on the same building, it'd be nice to compare, but we'll get probably pictures of this. Even more.
It, it might happen in the future, I mean, as we keep moving through different orders. I mean, the windows we have are these really big, this old. In style, it's the eighties. They can put the flag in place.
Yeah.
Uh, so eventually, hopefully, we'll circle back.
Great. Uh, so with that, can I have a motion?
Yep, motion to approve C O A twenty five zero zero three zero nine. Um, as submitted, uh, due to the fact that it's on a, the window is on a secondary elevation. And it is leading to restroom.
And then, are you okay with the other items I brought up about the test case and all the other things?
Okay.
Sounds good. And can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, I think.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thanks a lot. Thanks for coming in. Yeah, we'll be interested to see how it goes. Okay, moving to, um, ten forty-one Summit Street, which is C O A twenty five hundred, three, two, four.
Oh, right, maybe abstaining.
Abstaining is for proximity. All right, team, once you get settled, and there we'll get you sworn in. If you can, all raise your right hands, and we'll just go down the line. If you state your name for the record.
Backside.
And you promised all to tell the truth to best of your ability, your testimony this afternoon.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll go to staff, and we'll be right back to you.
This is application. Zero zero three toothball at ten forty-one Summit Street. This is a request for action for exterior building operations, landscaping, a variant recommendation. The proposed work description is a variant recommendation from city code section thirty-one, twelve, dot two, one, D, one. To remove the requirement of screening for parking lot within eight feet of residential development. While the applicant will provide six feet, uh, provide a six foot, one hundred percent opacity fence. They would like to request a variance or with requirements providing the full fat wide screening back in the responsible room above that. Um, from city's city code section thirty-one, twelve, dot twenty-seven, to vary the requirement for the parking setback along third avenue from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. From city code section thirty-three, twenty-one, dot zero, one, A, to vary the requirement of a five foot set, setback for dumpster enclosure, enclosure with a two foot setback provided. City code section thirty-three, thirty-two, dot twenty-eight, to permit an encroachment or side yards by an existing parking space, specifically the encroachment for the parking space. Oh, wait, um, is that one scratched?
Yes, ma'am, that's so it's drawn, and it would just be a parking space two.
Great.
Yes, so this is to permit an encroachment into the side yard by an existing parking space.
Good.
Um, parking space two, which I think is now noted as number one. Um, as detailed on the attached plan by six inches. This is four feet and six inches from the property line, but from the five feet and that's required. So I will make an effect. Um, also for landscaping, to plant thirty-one and green shrubs at thirty-six inches incorrect on the north south and east property lines. Plant one and the green shrub, shrub at the six inches tall on the south side of the building. Um, to retain the multiple beds on the south side of the building. Brasswood sod areas on the north south and east property lines. And the existing sidewalks tree is to remain. And for the exterior building alterations, to install insurance is on the level of equipment screen on the roof to screen H M A equipment. Install slim full cut, full cut off L E D ball packs of the window on the north elevation and the various locations of the west elevation. And install two light medium style stall for an entry system in the existing opening on the south. The staff analysis is the commission previously recommended a variance to allow for C three commercial use of food and beverage store at this location. The applicant is now seeking additional variances, site design, and has provided an updated site plan. At the May business meeting, commissioners have the following feedback. Commissioners noted that they will provide that parking space one is not lots of parking space, it's very close to the street. And this should not affect the variance application as the applicant is providing more parking than required. The commission stated that they were comfortable with the lack of buffer area between the property and the adjacent residential. Just the inclusion of the one hundred percent opacity fence over property line. The commission asked for the finish on the louvers to be a color that is similar to the shingle color so that they blend in better with the building. The commission requested a sightline study to see if the height of the louvers would be lower, as it was noted that the louvers interfere with the view of the dormers. The commission asked if it would be possible to move the H M A equipment, um, somewhere on grade, for example, to one of the northern parking spots. The commission asked if it would be possible to do a foot handle study to understand the level of lighting on the proposal. The commission requested a diagram of the L E D wall packs that don't understand the cut offs. Um, and asked staff to verify that the existing entrance door is not historic. And, um, the commission also asked for clarification on the purpose of the cages on the windows and whether they will be removed. The applicant clarified with staff that the cages on the windows shall be removed from the building's side. Additionally, parking space number one has been removed from the site plan and from the variant recommendation request. And an alternative light fixture with photometric, photometric diagram has been provided. Um, the new material showed a sightline study of the original height of the screens and the new lowest screen height as requested by the commission. However, it appears that the height of the H M A equipment has increased since the previous materials were reviewed at the business meeting and now obscure the view of the dormers facing Southern Street. Staff recommends relocating the, um, DOAS unit to another location on the site and subsequently reorienting the exhaust fans. In such a way that they do not interfere with the view of the dormers from Southern Street. Staff also encouraged the read sign of the dumpster enclosure to be more on board rather than the proposed shut above spending saying to revise additional screening. H B O staff note that the property appears to have been constructed around the late nineteen twenties to early nineteen thirties. And as such, the current door is not in keeping with the vintage of the property, thus staff to do so this is most likely a replacement door. Staff recommendation is to continue application C O A twenty five zero zero three two four. To allow the applicant time to explore other locations for the taller H M A equipment. And a redesign of the dumpster enclosure. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen dot eleven standard for alteration, numbers one, two, five, nine, ten, oh, ten and twelve. City code section thirty-one sixteen dot thirteen standards for site improvements, A and D. And the short mall design guidelines on site work.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate it, Steph. All right, over you.
Yes, just to go ahead and add, um, we would still like to, if possible, by repeat the application and move forward on the variances requested at this time.
Yeah, we actually have to vote on those separately anyway, so.
Okay, yeah, great. Um, we're ready to answer any questions you might have about any of those, I think that, um, staff after or captured them. And we are drawing one variance request just for that. And we'll go ahead and talk about the other, any speed line.
Yeah, let's talk about the variances first. Um, so is there a revised site plan, or are we just assuming that space one is gone on the existing site?
There is a.
There is, okay, I just couldn't find it in my, I may be looking at the wrong thing in this folder, though.
Yes, looks on the screen, here's the gap, David.
All right, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay, sounds good. So.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go. Gotcha. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we had that. Um, from my perspective, I, you know, stated this at the other meeting, I'll just restate, uh, for the record. Um, I'm okay with the variance from the setback, the buffer strip, due to the fact that we have, uh, a full fence along the entire side. And the applicant worked with us to make sure that the parking was located to the rear of the building in order for us to be able to get rid of curb cuts along Summit. So, um, you know, I think that's a small trade out on our part to lose that buffer strip and in exchange for the location of this parking, and it's still screened for the adjacent, so I'm okay with that. Uh, I appreciate removing that one marked strip or spot. Um, that way, uh, we, you know, we're kind of limiting the marking of places that are too far toward the alley. Again, if ad hoc parking occurs there, that's a different issue. That's a, that's a site use enforcement issue, but as far as approving the plan, I think this is a better solution. Um, what is the third one? What's the third variance? I forgot.
Well, the dumpster.
Oh, the dumpster, okay. Uh, that's just, uh, that's just the distance, right?
Right.
Okay, so that doesn't have to do with the materiality of the fence. So, yeah, I mean, this seems to work fine. Uh, there's an alley, public alley right next door. So that should enable, uh, vehicles to easily service that without any problems based on the layout of the parking lot. So, uh, from my perspective, I'm good to recommend the variances. Again, we don't approve the variances, we recommend the B Z A, so, um, other discussion on the variance requests.
I don't.
Okay, sounds good. So I'll make a motion to approve, or I'm to recommend approval of the variances to the, the B Z A, or B Z A, sorry, different city, get confused. Um, to the B Z A, um, based on the, the factors that I mentioned as I went through each of those. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor? I oppose, and abstentions. Shannon's an abstention. Okay, so you're recommended to the B Z A, so good luck there. And now let's talk about the actual other stuff. So we've got lighting, we've got site plan, uh, landscaping and fenced dumpster enclosure, I guess. So what would you like to tell us about all those things?
So I guess I'll, I'll work in reversal, we're from, uh, staff report, thank you. So with that, I, I will point out the dumpster closure, I don't think there's any hurt with changing from a. You know, board on board of the board to.
Okay.
It is a city standard detail that we're deploying here, but happy to.
Okay.
Happy to change that. So that is the condition of approval. Uh, the landscape plan is, uh, is there, it's included on sheet A one or two. Again, uh, existing tree to remain and everything else is new. Uh, three foot tall, every range shrubs.
Okay.
Around.
Sure, it's good.
Uh, we had a little bit of a discussion about the existing plan, which is, which is indicated there, uh, next to the building. Rest of it beside lawn.
Okay.
Uh, as, as is existing, so. That's, that's, that aspect, uh, maybe real quick on the lighting, um, it was requested that we include a photometric diagram, which is, I think, three sheets down. So that is, that has been included, there it is there. Uh, again, these are full cut off wall packs, basically just, you know, providing security, lighting, illumination around the building itself. Pointing straight down, so that we're not, when it may be polluting, uh, the area with, with horizontal or upward lighting.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly.
Um, so before we get to the screen on top, I think the rest of these are a little simpler, so let's just talk through these, uh, real quickly. Cut off fixtures did greatly improve. I just don't want to have anybody across the street mad at us. Um, so that is, uh, helpful. Um, I, I don't know, Steph, you looked at the photometrics, I assume it, you know, comes out the way it's supposed to. Um, then, um, the landscaping, I don't have any problems with, again, just reiterating, really appreciative of cutting, getting rid of those curb cuts on Summit, gonna be greatly additive. Was done, only a few more to go, whole street. And then, um, sorry, I already forgot the third thing.
Dumpster.
Dumpster closure, yeah, if you're willing to change it, that's great. So those are my comments on those. Uh, Paige, what do you think about those three issues?
Yeah, the only thing to add is the, um, lights, I think it's unfortunate that you took that, like, full parking, um, with the aisle and the parking lots away from your neighbors. So, and when the lights, the spotlight, they come down, that's what we're looking for. Um, but that was the other comment I had there. And then if you're open to the staff regulations for the dumpster enclosure, that would be great.
Okay, sounds good. Join them through the air, those items.
For your phones.
Okay, sounds good. So let's, uh, talk about the top screening now. So over to you.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we discussed, it was requested that we do a sightline study, uh, which is included on sheet A two hundred, uh, looking at the north elevation. So we're looking south at this, and, uh, we did two, two lines of sight from the curb. Uh, looking up at that roof. And the screen was originally shown, you can see it there, the second setting, I think, on the next sheet down. There it is, sorry. Uh, so, so the dash line is where we originally had it, four foot six, uh, fifty-four inch tall screen, which would screen more of the rooftop equipment, uh, majority of it. You can see just a, just a sheet in the corner of that DOAS unit is visible, uh, with the fifty-four inch screen. We did lower it down to three feet as requested or as discussed, uh, just to show what that looks like. So there we do get to see the dormers. Um, and remember, this is a perspective, or this is not a perspective view, this is a straight on.
Right, right.
And you can view, so bear in mind that you're always going to be able to see more at a, at a more bleak angle as you travel, uh, south down Summit Street. Uh, so with the screen lowered, we do see the dormers, but we also see more of that DOAS unit, the exhaust fan.
Uh, man, those are big. Um, okay, uh, well, Paige will put you on the spot. It's the resident architect. What are your thoughts on this?
Um, I just wanted to first ask if there was any exploration, um, other locations.
Yes, there, there has been, um, and it is, well, we'll say extremely difficult, nothing is impossible, right, because it's extremely difficult to move these to grade. Uh, and the result, I'm not sure that the commission would like the result much better because we're going to see more ductwork and we're going to see this in that case. Uh, at least when the rooftop, I think, we're only seeing the top portion of the roof in the summer.
What, um, what is the solution currently?
Uh.
Or, or.
I'm saying.
For the previous owner or, um.
Uh, so there, there is actually no condition. You get, there's no conditions, there's a gas fire or something inside, and that provides seat only. Condition, uh, heated air, this.
I got you. It's a lack of a solution, more of a condition.
Yes.
Sounds good. Um, yeah, uh, I mean, it's kind of tough, tough, tough spot for us, because I don't really, can't think of another solution myself. Um, and these are, I assume, just typical gray units, or are they brown, or are they, like, where are they?
I think the typical is gray.
Yeah.
I could ask the question if there's a, a finish that could be applied.
Yeah, I mean.
For something I've had to explore before.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I've seen them in like a tan, I've seen them in gray, most like, most often, and then occasionally they're a darker color, but all, always they're tan or, tan or gray, just because it's gray. So it's less be, I don't have this color as much.
I will say from, from, uh, from a design standpoint, this isn't, I mean, it's an industrial building.
Right, right.
Um, so I would say it's simply not a character to have or see rooftop equipment, just because it's not there currently, doesn't mean it's not necessarily appropriate for the building itself.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm with you. I mean, the, the, when they put that flat addition on the front at some point, which I think is an addition, if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
Um, kind of changed the characteristics of it anyway. Um, so if they're, say, say they're going to be on the roof, Paige, what do you think's the, like, a, a better solution? To have a higher screen wall, a lower screen wall, no screen wall, different material, what do you think?
Well, if, um, on the roof plane, um, is the largest equipment, can that be like tucked in the out corner of the. Sorry, can you go to the roof plane or should I?
Yeah.
The boxes.
Yeah, the, the DOAS unit could potentially move to the south. Um, we do need, we do need roof exhaust fans.
Yeah.
Uh, so those have to be the furthest south, and they have a, I think it's a ten foot radius, uh, because the DOAS unit is bringing. Think of there, exhaust fans exhausting dirty air, so we might be located a few feet.
Okay.
Uh, we're not going to take it all the way to the corner.
Yes.
Um, the, the, the sort of thinking, the logic there was say, we could sort of locate it between the dormers.
Yeah.
So we're not blocking.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
Of course, just depending on where you're standing on the street is whether it's a.
We had a restaurant.
Something's ever sent. Yeah, right. Um, I'm damn sympathetic to that idea, though, just due to the fact that, oh, you know, not that, not that we're catering, everybody's driving, but, uh, the directionality of the street being that way. Um, probably the further we get to the south, the better it'll look, as you're coming up on it anyway.
Well, and the sightline is from the curb, but.
Yeah.
You know, the, the appreciation of that will be from personally secondly.
Yeah.
Over, so, you know, it gets better and further out, you know, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what do you think, Paige, the taller screen that they showed before, and it scares more of the dormer, or this lower one that they've shown now?
Uh, it's simple. Um. I'm wondering if the, since the units are more set back than the screen, I think the shorter screen might be the better solution. Um, if you guys are, I'll say, think for that one, a little bit more appropriate, because in, in different angles, you're kind of less screened to the building itself.
At least it cleans up all the clutter, the small clutter.
Yeah.
And then, are you okay with the materiality that they're showing with this, because it's metal, right?
It's metal, and, um, we did identify a color that's close to the sort of red trim.
Okay, that's, that's.
Like the shingles, but the, but the color will be on itself.
Yeah, I think that works. I don't know, what do you think, Pedro? Is it better if it's a different color? I mean, if it's too dark, it'll obviously discolor, but I don't know what.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I think either would really be okay since it's not actually with the, the whole roof as the background and this cover and stuff, so I'm comfortable. I don't know, either she can go matching or the trim color.
Yeah. Um, okay, Jordan, what do you think?
Yeah, there was a show.
Staff, what do you think about all this discussion?
Um. I think it might be helpful to be able to see maybe a perspective rendering to see what those units look like from, from eye level. If that's what the commission would like to see. Um. But we would just need reasons for. but we would just need reasons for approval if that was granted.
Right, yeah. Um, well, I can say I'm definitely comfortable with the first three issues. I think it sounds like we all are. I do wish that we had other people here to see if Paige and I and Jordan are on the right track. But
Yeah.
What do you two feel about that for today's approval as far as the screening?
Um, I think from the business meeting, we did have some other.
That's true.
So I think that would be comfortable moving forward with the screening solution.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, what about you?
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
Um, so to sum up, can you sum up Paige, your thoughts on like what the, the best solution for that thing with regard to materials and size and color and all that?
Yes. If we might do a.
So you're knocking out. Let's go for it.
Okay.
Yeah, a certificate of appropriate function, appropriate as motion.
Okay. Um, so motion to approve COA twenty-five zero zero three two four? Two four. Um, uh, with the conditions, I'll start with the rooftop screening. Uh, with the conditions of the rooftop screening, um, how this is shortened to the thirty feet. Three feet and the equipment on the roof is so organized that the largest equipment can push as far as possible due to the restriction on the equipment itself. Um, and that the color of the screening is to either reach the shingles or the trim of the existing building. And that's it, the screen can be mounted.
Yeah, let's keep going.
And then, um, as far as the dumpster closure, the condition is that they are okay with moving forward with staff's recommendations for the materiality. Um, I mean, the lighting is approved as well to the distance from the property lines that you, the photometrics that were given with the stripping down light for surveillance of the building itself.
Anything else that we're missing? Oh, landscape plan. Has submitted?
Right.
Submitted. All right, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? I opposed and abstentions. Shannon? Okay, that's it. That's it for us. Go, go to the BZA and see how it works out. If all goes well at the BZA, what's your timeline? What's your estimated time?
Yeah, we're ready to give this in for, for permitting, so.
Okay.
Yes, really.
Oh, yeah. Well, thanks for working with us. This is going to make it a much, much better site than it was, is today and has been for, oh, I don't know. Twenty years I've lived in the neighborhood, twenty-five years. So, yeah. All right, thanks. Good luck. All right, on, next on the agenda, um, we have eighty East Fourth Streets, COA five zero 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 five.
About to stay.
So you have to stand, okay. Abstention, so we're talking back in. If you will each raise your right hands and state your names for the record.
No, where should I go?
Yeah, I need to show.
And you promise to tell the truth in your testimony, the best of your ability this afternoon.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, we'll go to staff and we'll go right in.
This is COA twenty-five zero 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 five at eighty East Fourth Avenue. Um, this is a request for action for an exterior building alteration to remove the existing slate roof, replace with certain pre-tabning brick, the new roof shingles list. At the main business meeting, commissioners have followed feedback. Um, the commissioners state, the commission stated the importance of the preservation of original slate roofs. They noted that the condition of the roof did not appear to be irreparable from the photographs provided and stated that it was clear from the photographs that the roof was under some repairs in the past. However, the commission acknowledged that the assessment provided did state differently. The commission also noted that new appropriate flashing could solve many water entry problems and that replacement slates would last a lot longer than the proposed asphalt shingles. The commission requesting clarification on how many slates would need to be replaced on the roof and noted that thirty damage slates, as assessed in December twenty twenty-four, would not be sufficient to require a full roof replacement. Uh, since the business meeting, the applicant has provided staff with an updated quote that notes one hundred and seventy-five damaged slates on the roof of the property. HPO staff continues to encourage the preservation of the original slates, as it according section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standard to alteration and the Italian village guidelines on roofs. Um, staff recommendation is to continue application, COA twenty-five zero 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 five to allow the applicant consent to review more appropriate roof replacement options. And the basis of this recommendation is sit different section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standard to alteration. Numbers two, five, six, and eleven and twelve, and the Italian village guidelines on roofs.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, over to you. Let's hear what your thoughts are.
Okay. Yeah, so we've talked to four different roofers and most recent was durable slate.
Okay.
Theirs was similar. They said eighty tiles look like they need replaced, but another eighty would probably get damaged and need replaced in the process. So that was one, one stick.
Gotcha. Okay.
Um, but they also said that we should budget for more replacement every year.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and that, that was, this is tough one because I feel like we're going to find that out every year by finding interior damage. It, you know, they didn't have to do the replacement every year and replace whatever the interior damage is.
Right.
But, um, but the other thing they said was that, um, that the underland looked like it was original, which they, they called it a gap, which was, you know, long times of road trade. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So in the damage that we had in December, there was missing tiles and bad, we had pictures of it, but it was on repair guys film. But, uh, the tiles that had slid off and missing had these big gaps underneath it and the water was.
Yeah.
If you're oriented and so. So because of the, and that, and that's another reason why they were saying that there's going to be more tiles. Just if they get up there and try to replace them because there's not, they, in a lot of places, wood underneath the tops, so. Um, that's another reason why, you know, I feel like right thing to do is to get the, you know, the new underland there and with the plywood and plastic and, and all of cheating and all of that to, uh, uh, to, to really get, you know, a long-term leak proof roof. Because of, because of that, that part of it not being there, basically, yeah. Um, the other things they noted were that that, that's, that's the picture so much that I have. So it's been patched so many times. But there is all different material, rubber, plastic. There's a big section that the durable slate I said was, was gone. They replaced with, uh, ta, uh, sheet though.
So, okay, yeah.
So this, so that makes us feel like, you know, continuing to patch this, this thing is, um, uh, not, not the best case go forward.
God.
Because with, you know, taking that, taking it down the road, we would eventually end up with all new slate that's still.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, just to compare to the earlier, because I, I think when we saw that earlier report, it mentioned only a very small amount. And that's what kind of confused us. It's kind of like, it's like twenty or thirty or something.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, they, they, they're, 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 they know what, they know their sleigh roofs. That's.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, okay. Yeah, that's a lot of very compelling information. I appreciate that. Let's, uh, let's go down the row and see what people think.
Um, I think the information from durable slate about the under part of the roof is what makes it not repairable. So I'm, I think I'm changing my mind on this and kind of saying unfortunately, um, I might be in favor, I, I think I'm probably in favor of this being, um, replaced with roof shoes.
Paige, what do you think?
Um, yeah, stuff because it was easy to see the uh, slate she moved go. Did when they did their inspection, um, did they, did you kind of like pinpoint where the water was coming from or was it kind of just been a general issue?
So in December, there was, we, we lost a lot of tiles and they were, they had slid, made a lot of the ground and so, so, yeah, that one, that was Jan Baker's, they could see where the hole was, the, the hole where the tiles were gone. And they, they played some, some replacement tiles today in, in December.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I think it sounds like you guys have really tried to do diligence of getting the people out there to look at it, which I think helps us a lot when we're kind of having to go through these decisions. So, uh, I would agree that you guys, you don't want to see more damage to a historic house than um, even if we're trying to help keep it. So I would agree.
Yeah, and I, both of, of the, all of those comments I, I agree with as well as the fact that, um, it really, there's a lot, there's a lot going on up there. Um, and so, uh, again, you, ideally, it would be great if this was able to be a preserved slate roof and feel like this is kind of like, I can't remember that. There's a, that old thing about the boat. I cannot remember. The Greek, Greek saying, it's, you know? The, the shorter version is the guy who had the, the axe and he says, I've had the same axe for fifty years. And like, that's incredible how it lasts so long. He goes, I've only replaced the head three times and the handle seven times. So there's a version of a boat too that's a little more specific. Anyway, it just seems like really we're not saving the original roof. We're trying to save a version of a repair roof that has been unfortunately probably repaired poorly well before you were ever around, uh, involved with this house. So um, I also do think that, uh, while I, you know, I love the historical quirk of the fact that there was a time when it was traditionally installed over gapped boards. It's difficult in trying to restore, reclaim a roof of this age when you have the possibility that you could have severe water damage with just a few lost tiles. So, um, yeah, as much as I'd love to see it, uh, that a new slate roof, I understand, you know, in our standards, we do allow this to happen and we have certainly done it in other places. So uh, again, thanks for all of the research you did and for giving us compelling reasons and going, not that the other people weren't reputable, I just think that durable's sort of like, they really know their stuff. And for them to have, have given that information, uh, for me compels me to understand that preservation of this would be very difficult, if not unlikely, over the next decade. Uh, and you continue to lose parts of that roof and it would end up just being, again, kind of an ad hoc process. So because of all that, I'm okay also supporting this. So with that, um, Steph, do you have all that in the notes? Is that good enough? To memorialize it? Okay, so we can just get a straight motion.
Motion to approve COA twenty-five zero 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 five, um, with the condition of commission has bravest call.
So, uh, second.
All in favor?
Uh.
I opposed and we have one abstention. All right, thanks a lot. Uh, good luck. All right, I think we are on to our final case of the day, which is thirty-six East Lincoln, COA two five zero zero three eight three. All right, sir, whenever you get settled, get sworn in. Hey, raise your right hand, state your name for the record.
Derek Boulard.
And you promise to tell the truth in your testimony, the best of your ability this afternoon.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, Steph?
This is.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We, we wait for Jordan to come again. Moving so fast. We'll let you into our last application. All right. Now, Steph.
Yes, this is application COI twenty-five zero zero three eight three at thirty-six East Lincoln Street. This is a request for action for signage and graphics. The proposed web description is to install awnings on three large storefront windows. The awnings to project twenty-four inches from the building facade and be thirty-six inches in height and include the names of menu items. The awnings for structure color to be powder color black. To install a balance above the front door with restaurant name. Install heat applied wayfinding signage with the restaurant names in southwest corner of the building facade. Install heat applied vinyl wayfinding signage to the west elevation building facade with restaurant name. And replace the existing graphic with new brand's ottawa on the existing light sign. The applicant consented staff that the light sign shall continue to be lit as existing, just a change to the sign face of graphic. Um, which is the unique nature of this light sign. HPO staff recommended the new sign face be constructed of high density urethane at a previous approval to ensure that the lighting conditions emulate what was previously approved as closely as possible. At the main business meeting, the commissioners have the following feedback. The commission noted that they are supportive of the awnings on the light sign and the arrow sign. But as did the heat shrink vinyl wayfinding sign on the corner of the building could be artistic, as there is less signage proposed for this building. The commission also asked for the menu item wording to be removed from the window awnings. Noting that this is not appropriate, but there is flexibility on what can be placed on the inside of the building. HPO staff notes that the awning flap edges and balance edges should be straight throughout those scallops per the short and non-design guidelines on awnings and canopies. These guidelines state that awning flap edges should be compatible with the architectural features of the building and the materials of the building facade and related store design. And that canopies at building entrances should reflect the architectural character and treatment of the entrance. The awnings, um, should also be constructed of soft canvas online of short and non-design guidelines. HPO staff recommends that the wording be removed near the flap edge of the awnings, noting that the short and non-design guidelines state that text placed on awning should be limited to the business name and the address and the corporate logo should not be included. Additionally, the short and non-design guidelines on signage say that each ground floor attendant space may have one projecting sign and either one wall sign or awning sign as approved by the commission. As such, staff recommends that the applicant limit the amount of signage to just the light sign and the balance sign. Staff recommendation is the approval of application COA twenty-five zero zero three eight three with the following conditions. That the awning and balance be designed and installed with a flat edge rather than scallop. That the awnings are made of a soft canvas or vinyl material. That the awnings be fixed to the face of the building through mortar joints. That the signage is limited to the light sign and balance sign and no wording may include it on, on the awnings. Um, the sign face of the blade sign is made from HDU and not internally illuminated per the previous blade sign approval. Or staff recommends continuation of the application to allow the applicant time to revise the materials to align with the guidance of the short and non-design guidelines. And the basis of this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standard for alteration. Nine, ten, and twelve, the short and non-design guidelines on awnings and canopies and sign.
Okay, thank you very much. Over to you.
Perfect. Um, love to kind of parse these out individually with you guys. So hopefully we start with the three big awnings.
Okay.
We've got the two colors. We're working with kind of a city awning. Uh, we're totally fine with taking the names off bounds.
Okay.
We do want to have a loose balance. We like the wave. They, uh, that might be rendered a little bit differently than we might think. There's a light wave. It's a little less scallopy that I think is a little nicer. Um, but we'd be happy with this one too. So that's kind of, uh, and then we like the, you know, achieving the, the entering stop of pearls or the messy name and the, uh, balance lash. I would wonder, uh, all of the loose balance is, you know, be the same caricature. Uh, so that's kind of the awnings. I don't know if you want to stop there and we'll keep moving.
Sure, let's talk about the awnings. What do you think?
Um, yeah, I think that's all great for the awning. I I did not know we had a rule about scallop edges. It makes sense because if like you have a bunch of them together, it's different. This is off High Street. Um, so I think.
In a new building.
In a new building. So I would be okay with a scallop situation. I think I would prefer maybe a, a little less of the, the, the lesser of the two you described. It's a less emotion.
This one we want, I think, want to use is the lesser than regular wave.
Yeah. Uh, Jordan, your thoughts on the awnings as proposed, as altered as proposed?
Yeah, no, I think I would agree with those comments as well.
It's good, Paige?
Nothing additional.
Yeah, I'd say, I, I think it's definitely an unusual circumstance in that we have a full-fledged commercial space that's a full block off High, which we just don't have very often. So I think that is a justification for having a little extra, hey, this is an actual bistro thing. And I think, you know, I, I, I would be uncomfortable having all the words up there because that, everybody asks for that. And then all of a sudden we're going down a, a different situation. But you willing to take the words off, I think they have a scallop. Uh, says that that's bistro as you look down the street. So I think, I think I will. says that that's bistro as you look down the street, so I think, I think I will be willing to make an exception in that case, so. Okay, so what's next?
Um, to the vinyl wrap signage.
Okay.
So the um, Betsy's on the arrow corner, I don't think the commissioners had any issues last time, they'll not change the corner wrap Betsy's, as you see the stripes on it, thank you, um. So we've really struggled with from High Street or Sweet Green, any ice cream is, it's kind of reflective. There's a pupil tree-lined street and you cannot see that blade sign M from anywhere, especially when trees are bloom. Um, so we really feel like that corner sign is uh, that's lower, that's more pedestrian, but this is really important. Um, I actually was going back and forth with the restaurant owner, um, since the business meeting. And he actually threw out the idea, so I know the short earth guidelines are limiting the number of signs of removing the blade sign in order to keep the Betsy's lower, so that is an option. Um, I know we can't have the Betsy's name on there from the business meeting, so the other option that I would propose would be to uh, just keep the stripes and take the words off of the border, although I think the name and stripes are more impactful on the blade sign, so. Those are those two options kind of make sense from committee for this.
So you're saying lower the blade sign?
No, either one, option one would be, to be sorry to clarify, option one would be to remove the blade sign completely.
Oh.
Um, and then just keep the Betsy's stripes and name as shown. Um, option two would be to keep the blades are in and just remove the Betsy's text and just have the stripes. Is that more clear?
Yeah, I mean, I I.
We also have all of them, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just that's important.
Um, okay, what do people think?
Um. I agree that I think the blade sign is appropriate within the uh area, I do wonder I guess tell me if this is not appropriate, but um, even having some just some of this like triangle um signs that you put out during the day at that street corner.
You can do that anyway, yeah.
You can.
Mm-hmm, no, nobody's uh, nobody's actually meant to restrict about those.
Yeah. I wonder, um, so if you did go the route of wanting the um blade sign, maybe just the stripe um, not the word on it, you could go with one of those kind of like um, what's this called?
Sandwich board.
Sandwich that would there it go, that has um the name for it on there for that um corner there, that could pull people down, that street might be an option for you guys to think about. Um. But I think as far as if you both are wanting to remove the blade sign and just keep the name on the corner there, so it's more visible, uh, I think that's appropriate because we're limiting the signage and that would be kind of option you guys are lying for.
Yeah, now, are you interested in potentially having Betsy's on one side but not the other? Because I think that would already be within our guidelines, if you had the, had it on the south facing this side, and I think you you could have the wall sign and the and the blade sign there already. So I think really the only extra sign, if I'm not mistaken, is just the one that faces toward High Street, correct?
Um.
Because that is two wall signs.
If you were, if you were treating this as two separate storefronts, then yes, I believe. That is.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, I just feel like it's on the corner, I think at least you could get, like I don't know. I'm I'm just not as concerned, I guess, about the number of
And you can note that as a.
Betsy's on there. Yeah.
Yeah.
That is, this is a unique condition, because it does have those two storefronts.
It's a corner building, right, so like the 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 corner, those windows kind of early four feet apart from the inside, they're kind of touched both the pieces of glass or the or that Betsy's corner wrap is, yeah, it's it's just corner building, so. Okay, we love to keep it as, but you know, if you guys could sport it as shown, we'd love to just wanted to give you some other options at least, yeah, so it wasn't there.
I'd be okay with it being only on the south to sun of the building. It's a south side.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, I mean I don't know, I mean, I I don't mind this Betsy going up the side at the same time, even with the trees and whatnot, you're still going to get some some value out of that blade sign when you're heading east-west, and you'll get value out of the the Betsy going up the side of the building when you're going north to the to the north. Uh, so I I think for me, I would be fine if just the one Betsy came off that we see in this lower one uh facing towards High Street and leave everything else as it is. Uh, as far as the Betsy's go, down the down the side, jump on it, honestly, dark.
That's the one that you see in my shirt, unfortunately.
Gotcha, so that's the one you want the most?
Yeah. Sorry.
Um, I mean, I don't, it doesn't bother me that much, to tell you the truth.
I know, but the problem is, it's like.
No, I know. No, I know.
I would be.
Along with it.
I, I think it's up to you, right, like you tell us, do you want the blade sign and and just the stripes, or do you want?
I think the blade sign or the corner wrap, finally, whatever you call it is more important than the M at the top that's walking there that's covered by trees.
I was gonna say, like, I think even when I'm like walking by it, that blade sign is really high.
Yeah. Um, lining it up with the the windows, unfortunately, that's what made sense.
Yeah, so, yeah, if I were you, I'd get, I'd just, I'd just uninstall placement and cheaper, well, I guess it's already there, so it's not cheaper, but um. Yeah, it that would be my recommendation, but it's it's obviously up to you.
Yeah, I mean, and also, it's not like we can't tell you what kind of sign to have. Like, I I like a blade sign, but on the other hand, it's like, it gets picked, so. Some businesses will put any sign up, we ask them to.
I know.
It's all different story.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so there is a minimum height.
It's a fire.
And so it's probably.
Yeah, or else you get into a whole other thing, which you can do, but then you have to get an exception from the city over the right of way and it gets to be.
Which they're not going to do on the alley. Yeah.
Yeah, pretty spicy about it. Um, okay, so it seems like then potentially the solution is you just remove the blade sign, everything else stays as shown with regard to the Betsy signage, correct?
Other than the writing on the.
Other than the writing on the. So really, all we're saying is removing the writing, removing the writing and uh, looking for a a more gentle scallop than what you've rendered.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it? That's all? After all that discussion, that's my question.
All right, um, move to approve, why isn't this on here, application two five zero zero three um, with the condition that the lettering is removed from the balance is that the scallop is less um pronounced than shown in um in the application and that the blade sign is removed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions. All right, you're approved. What's the timeline on this one?
Uh, we are two for shop sock over to the first one you do.
Oh, wow.
It's so safe.
How the kids are.
Probably go there until like July, then.
Tough for you, I'm going to June.
Yeah.
All right, great, sounds good, thank you. All right, Steph, what else do we have today? Other business?
That is everything, say.
I moved to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, all right, we are adjourned. Miss Chopstaff, thanks a lot, thanks for dealing with the technical whatevers we're going on.
We can, thank you.
Okay, well, you did it, fresh agenda, right?
Yes. Maybe light as well.
Okay, good.
Oh, I am out of town, June four to June twenty-eight.
Okay.
So I will miss when on my honeymoon.
It's amazing.
Oh.
Sorry.
Very jealous.
Uh, Greeks and turks. Yes.
You need to study on his Greek story, but.
I know. Like, I'm sure I'll know story once I get back. Yeah, we're seeing like three wonders of the world and it feels like we're ruining the day for twenty days, so. Um.
Great.
Ruining the day.
Oh, yeah.
Book or something.
All right, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thanks.